Call the meeting order. Let's have a roll call. Mr. Burris.
President.
Mr. Pope.
Present.
Mr. Tanner.
Present.
Mr. Barner.
Present.
Chairs here. Permission. Okay. Let's have a, let's say, I've asked Mr. Dave if he would lead us in prayer before we start meeting.
If you would, let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all of your goodness and your mercy toward us. Father, we thank you for this county. We thank you for its residents. We thank you for its leaders, and we pray today, Father, that everything that we say and do will be pleasing to you. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Let your leaders do the flag of the United States of America and do the repotage of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me for that phone going off. I thought it was on silent. We have some guest speakers today. We got three, and we want to allow them at least five minutes, if you would, but Festerman, please.
Mr. County Commission Chairman, Commissioners, Administrative Executive, Mr. Boy. My name is John Festerman. I live at 815 Griffith Circle here in Ware County. I am a native Ware Countyan. Today, I represent the Sons of Confederate Veterans. And I also, and I'm a member of that group, and I'm also representing the Daughters of the Confederacy. United Daughters of Confederacy. I talked to that president, and she, she said since I was not a member of that group, that it would be difficult for me to represent them. But she said that whatever I said would be in concert with what they wanted. So I feel like I'm representing both organizations today. The Sons of Confederate Veterans has, have a camp. They call it a camp, an organization. And that's Clement A. Evans Camp. Clement Evans was from this area. And that's one reason we have this matter to bring to your attention today. We have a memorial stature along with other items in downtown Wecross in Phoenix Park, which have been there since the early 1900s. Probably over 100 years, I'm sure it is. At that time, the city officials gave their blessing to put that in Phoenix Park. And they approved that action. The city of Wecross officials now demand that the statue and other materials or other memorials be moved, or they will do away with them, sell them, or destroy them. We have filed a lawsuit objecting to this action, the Sons of Confederate Veterans and the United Daughters of Confederacy. And we have filed this lawsuit. The suit is presently pending. If we lose the suit, we want to have another location on which to move the memorial stature and the associated memorials, such as the cannon which was given to the city and given to our organizations by the Atlantic Coastline Railroad many years ago. Our organization feels that an even better location would be a portion of your parking lot on Ossie Davis Parkway. Specifically, we would like it to be on the corner of Ossie Davis Parkway and Church Street. Presently, it is parking spaces, about 13 to 15 parking places in that area. We would also like title to the ownership of this site. The site would revert back to the county if the Sons of Confederate Veterans ever defaulted in any way or became not a viable organization. We would have a clause in the deed saying that we could not dispose of the property or anything else other than it would come back directly to the county of Ware. In summary, I think you will all agree that government is a servant of the people. We do not live in a divine right monarchy. And bad behavior by our servants, such as the city folks in Wecross, are destroying our history, and that needs to be stopped. We hope and pray that you will help us do that. One last thought. As a long-term resident of Ware County, I personally feel that a majority of Ware Countyans would be positive to our aforementioned request. Thank you for your time. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them if I can. If not, then I appreciate your time.
Mr. Chairman, I got one.
Question. Mr. Festerman, got a couple of questions I'd like to ask, please.
Sure.
Appreciate you coming up today. We know this has been a very contentious issue, not only in Wecross and Ware County, but throughout our nation, with the removal of the Confederate monuments and statues. And it's a very touching issue. Now, you mentioned about the, so if I'm understanding you correctly, you want the county, this body, to deed property, to this organization to house these monument, this monument?
We were, we were asking for a site on your property, Ware County property. Is that what you're asking?
Right.
And the site would be on the corner of Ossie Davis Parkway and Church Street?
So we would be moving it from downtown to the county's property?
Well, it's moving from one location to another location. I don't know what you would count it as county property or city property.
Well, it right now is in the city. It's located on city property. Not really on city property. It's on city property, but my understanding that there never was a formal agreement back in the day whenever they put it there with the city and the Daughters of Confederacy to put that monument there. That's my understanding.
Well, they gave their approval about 110 years ago, and now they are invalidating that approval, or they say they are. And that's the reason we have sued, not to let them do that. We had an approval by the city officials and by the city of Wecross at that time to put the memorials in Phoenix Park, which we did.
Which was, like you say, about 100 years ago?
110 years, yeah.
Okay. And it was a lot different climate at that time, a lot different, you know, think patterns at that time. And now we in 2021, and things are changing. And some people are viewing this as a detriment, you know, not only to the city and the county, but to also to certain people. And this is why they are advocating for the removal of them, and if you remove them, it's no problem. I mean, statues and all that is for the margin, but if they could hire them in some type of museum or something like that. This is what a lot of places are doing.
Well, as I said, we can't change history, and history is as it is yesterday. And we feel like that it's, it would be a benefit to Ware County to do this. And that's the reason we are proposing or asking for permission and validation of taking this action.
So can you explain to me how you think it'd be a benefit to Ware County?
Well, I think it's a beautiful statue. I think it's adds a lot of character to our county and our city. I would be proud of anybody coming through here seeing the statue, which my grandfather is buried 70 miles from here, and he walked down here from Alphamatics. I'm proud of that. And I'm proud of him. And my grandfather was an engineer with the Atlantic Coastline Railroad here, and he died in Wecross. And I got a long history, and I feel like I have no step backwards from that whatsoever. They did not fight for anything other than the North invaded the South, and they, they loved the South.
Okay, well, like I said, we can get into a whole long discussion about that and debate it, and I know that's not what you're here for, and that's not what I'm trying to advocate. I'm just saying that I don't really see how it could really benefit Ware County to move it from the city, because right now it's in the court, and the courts are pretty much upheld what the city is trying to do and the removal of it. So now basically what you're doing is trying to find somewhere else to put it?
Yes, we're trying to put some other place to put it, because if it's, if, if we lose our lawsuit, we need to put it someplace. And we thought it would be an asset to the county. We thought it would be an asset to Wecross and South Georgia, to move it someplace where it's visible, where people can see it. We disagree in that they, some people feel like it's a liability in downtown Wecross. We don't feel that way. So if we are made to move it from there, we thought that this would be a wonderful, wonderful spot for it.
Okay. Well, again, I appreciate, you know, your concern about it, and I hope you can understand my concern also.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, man.
I got a question. Scott, do you have this request in writing so we'll know exactly what we're talking about?
I don't. It's just for Mr. Festerman.
Could you just present all your information to Scott so he can give it to us and we can look at it? I mean, I, I would like to find somewhere to put it. I don't know about taking up parking space here, but, you know, I think the commission would, is open to looking at seeing if there's an alternative. I think I am. But it needs to be in writing so we'll know what we're talking about. You could do that?
Well, thank you for that. But we're just trying to preserve our history.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll look into it. Mr. Hargrove? You come up?
Well, John's a hard act to follow. But I'll try. We, we have allied interest in keeping the statue where it is. And I haven't gotten to the point, I'm sorry. My name is Michael Hargrove. I live at 2012 Alice Street here in Wecross. I'm sure you know that Commissioners, that what happens in Wecross impacts many, if not all, of Ware County residents, visitors, and potential investors. You should also be aware by now that the city has recently voted to notify purported owners of the statue in Phoenix Park that it needs to be removed. If not, the city intends to start a civil action to take it down, sell it. This is in a response literally to a handful of locals who claim the statue only glorifies slavery. I've heard it more than one time in city chambers. For them, this is their profess some total of all that statue means, that it just glorifies slavery. That's as far as their education goes about it. And that's sad. I have yet to hear one truthful comment down at City Hall from anyone in the city acknowledging why the statue was actually erected or what business purpose it would serve by removing it. And this comes on the heels of this national woke movement all across the U.S. to remove as many so-called offensive symbols as possible from public view. But it is curious to me in this case that an NAACP rep from Fulton County was invited down to a city commission meeting earlier this year or last year to instruct the city on how to run its affairs. It's curious to me also that the only members of the commission who voted to remove the statue happen to be black. So I'm wondering what the real issue is here. It's almost like it's taking on the appearance of a personal vendetta. Not actually considering what's best for the city or the county or what the voters want. Because of that, I conducted a small, I called it a straw poll, and I did it on Facebook. And I did it on the Wecross and Blackshire, Georgia news page. I got about 450 responses so far. Over 99% of the respondents are against even moving the statue from its current location. Also, majority of the respondents want to vote on it, keep it or leave it. I've got a link to the YouTube that you can look at later. I'll give some information to the attorney. But it's time the county addressed this too. Although the county looks upon the city as, I guess, one of its crown jewels, so to speak. I would really be stunned to think that the county is willing to participate in supporting the disunity and division created because of this decision to move it. Listen, I'm here today to ask you two questions. One, does this commission support the permanent removal and auctioning off of our Confederate Memorial Statue in Phoenix Park? And two, would this commission pass and forward to the city a resolution recommending that this issue be placed on November's ballot? We've got a sample, a draft here that you might want to leave or look at, and I'll leave it with you. This I need my glasses for. Resolution, whereas the installation of the Confederate Memorial Statue in Phoenix Park in Wecross, Georgia, was heralded and conducted as a public event, whereas the statue was financed by many members of the public and including the city of Wecross and the county of Ware, to honor the Georgians who recalled to service in defense of their homeland. Whereas the memorial statue was intended to remain in its current location in perpetuity, whereas the city has maintained the park and the memorial statue therein for decades for the benefit and enjoyment of all resident, investor alike. Whereas it is illegal to remove memorial statues from public places on display. Whereas it is illegal for a member of a municipal council to vote on any question in which he or she is, has a personal interest. Therefore, be it resolved. This question shall be placed before the voters of Ware County in November 2021 to, and I quote, "Do Ware County residents, including the city residents, want the Confederate Memorial Statue currently located in Phoenix Park in Wecross permanently removed from its present location and disposed of elsewhere? Yes or no?" End quote. As a Ware County voter, I would appreciate it if the commission would remind their fellow Ware Countyans in the city, this ain't Fulton County. And that distorting history and denigrating others in order to feel better about themselves or their own past is not the Ware County way. Some locals need to be reminded of that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Tony.
Yeah, okay.
Hard for them.
Yes, I appreciate you coming, Ms. Hargrove, and appreciate your concern from your viewpoint. But I disagree with a lot of things you say. You say Ware County is not Fulton County. That's true. We're not Fulton County, but we're still a county that represent people in this county. And so that pretty much can be a trip to every county in the state of Georgia, all 159 of them. Now, you mentioned about the vote that was taken by the city council to remove the statue, right?
Correct.
And you say it's just ironic that the three, the black members on the council that voted for it?
I found that interesting, yes.
Okay, well, someone could make the argument they find it interesting that whenever they gave their blessing to put the statue there, what was the makeup of the council at that time?
I have no idea. City of Wecross.
I, I think I can pretty much tell you what the makeup of it was then. So what I'm saying is that, you know, you brought that in to the equation about the makeup of the council now. And I don't think that's as important, as important as the fact that the time has come, not only in Wecross and Ware County, but across this whole nation, where people are realizing that certain things just shouldn't be. And if they're gonna be there, then they should be housed in a proper place such as a museum or somewhere of that nature.
Well, certain things that shouldn't be are probably like open borders.
Yeah.
Or welcoming terrorists in the U.S. Not living in the past, sir.
Okay, well, we getting off into another different lane there, but also, you know, you mentioned about the law about it's illegal to remove statues and all that. And this is a law that was just recently enacted, I think maybe in the last general assembly, the one before that.
They've had variations of it for years, sir.
Yeah, but I think this is to try to, you know, to try to get ahead of, cart ahead of the horse as far as removal of the statues. And like I say, it's a very contentious issue. You can talk to people on both sides, and you get different viewpoints of it. But you know, it's something that just, it's a constant reminder. And this is what people saying, hey, just get, get this out of my face, you know, every time I look at it, it's just like, if you start talking about Nazi Germany, you don't see any statues over there. You don't see any monuments over there.
For what?
Of Hitler.
Why would you see a modeler?
Well, I'm saying, they, they don't have anything of, of the Nazis over there that, that reminds them of what happened there.
You know, not having a statue in Germany to the German soldier who served his country is the same thing as not having a statue to the American soldier who served his country.
I'm not talking about the soldiers.
To the Confederate soldiers who, who served his South.
Right.
Country, which was his state at the time. And you're obviously welcome to your opinions.
Yeah. Well, like I say, you know, it's a contentious issue, and I appreciate your concern, but I hope you can appreciate mine also.
I absolutely do.
Thank you.
That's why I came here today to help educate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hargrove.
Anybody got anything on that? Mr. Chris Cardwell?
Chairman, Commissioners, thanks for your time. I originally asked to come up here to talk with the sheriff about some procedures, but we got together, we worked our problems out, and he's a fine man, so I wanted y'all to know that. I have no more problems as far as procedure. That's pretty good, ain't it? But since the type of person I am, and I realize I have about two or three minutes out of public speak, here I am. I'm gonna take about two minutes, okay? First of all, I want to say something that I don't even talk about. The Confederacy is dead. Let them boys rest in peace, both sides, black and white, okay? Let them rest in peace. Move on to white people. If y'all don't want to start your own organization, start your own. Move on to white people. If y'all don't want to start your own organization, start something else, the Sons of the Men or whatever. Now, listen, I'm proud of history, but it's dead. Let it linger, man. There's more stuff going on. That's not what I came to talk about though. Here's what I want to tell you. A quick story here. This is, and then I'll be through, then I'm out here, and I don't need no questions. Here recently, this is hard, because this is, this is what's called an epiphany. If y'all know what an epiphany is, I don't like to use that word, but I had an epiphany. This is hard. Here recently, I realized, all my life, I've done or said whatever it took to make things go along smooth, you know? We all kind of do that, you know what I'm saying? But you know what I really finally realized? Is I was just having my way, is all I was doing. And I didn't really care about nobody else. So you know what? Ain't no telling how many people I hurt and how much trouble I caused by insisting on having my way. Y'all understand that? So, I can't change the past. I can't fix none of that stuff I caused. But here's what I can do from here on out. And I can make sure everybody is treated fair and square. Can y'all do that? Can y'all do that? Fair and square, that's all I ask. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Right.
Let's move on to the agenda items. Okay, we got our conflict of interest policy. I guess that's, I'm gonna have to go ahead and talk. That's on me, I guess, because the whole thing centers around me. My two boys is in the construction business, and they bid on some jobs here in Ware County, and they got it. And this does concern us, I guess, but we have to go along with the rules and the regulations too, or whatever. But I, I'm gonna leave it up to the commission to decide, decide on that. I don't have any interest in their business whatsoever, for as I'm concerned. I got out in fifteen, sold out, quit, and they started off as Thrift Brothers, and now they doing a lot of work under that name, and they've got a project. They were low bid on a project with the county, and they've been, somebody raised the issue about it. So, you know, we want to let the citizens solve it the best way we can. I'm gonna leave it to them, and they hire rule, we're gonna do it. Anybody got anything on it?
Mr. County Manager, what's our options?
If you don't mind, I would, I'd rather refer to the attorney. They drew this up. And so I'm gonna ask if she will respond to that, as far as that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think as you just alluded to, this is an issue that's come to light since you're taking office, and there is a bid from Thrift Brothers Construction. And so our office, at the commission's request, did some research into Georgia law as to, you know, what the implications are as far as if a commissioner has ownership in a company and/or if the commissioner's family members have ownership, which is a different situation. And so, you know, state law is very clear that if a commissioner, him or herself has ownership in a company that was submitting a bid, that would be a situation that was automatically disqualified. A more nuanced consideration comes when it's a family member, you know, how far out does that go? Second cousin once removed, you know, those type of considerations. And so what many counties have in place is a local policy that addresses that type situation. Currently, Ware County does not have a local policy in place, and so the commission had asked for the opportunity to consider some different options, okay? And so we have set forth before the commission some options to be considered if the commission so desires. And so you all have those before you, but to, you know, to articulate what those are, option one would be that what I'll call a family bidder, which would be a family member whose business is owned by a, and we can decide, you know, to what degree this would be in the family, but a family member of a current sitting commissioner whose business is owned by that family member. Whether that would be, option one would be an automatic disqualification if it was a family member. Of course, there are considerations for and against that. We've got the appearance of impropriety, you know, if a family member wins the bid, but also, we don't want to possibly, just across the board, disqualify someone who may be a responsible bidder that provides good work, good service, you know, those type things. So those are certain considerations. The commission may want to give that option. A second option was that a family bidder would be allowed to submit a bid, but that whoever the related commissioner is would have no oversight. So they would not, you know, vote during the process to approve. They would not be in any way supervising the contract going forward, basically not involved in the process. There would be, under option two, a penalty if there was a violation. So if the commissioner became involved and, you know, was somehow trying to be involved in the project, that would then disqualify the family bidder from bidding in the future. Then the third option is simply the same as option two, except there's no penalty for if there was some violation of involvement. That's a very brief overview. You know, we've had a lot of research and different discussions that gone into this, but if you all have any other questions, I'm certainly glad to, to answer those.
Okay.
I'm personally leaning towards option two. That allows a family bidder to bid with no oversight from any commissioner, excuse me, from the effective commissioner, and a penalty if it is proven at a later time, correct?
Yes, sir.
They would be suspended for a year from bidding on county projects.
Yes, sir.
The first one, this allows any kind of projects whatsoever, correct?
That would disqualify any project by any family bidder.
Okay. I'm, I'm leaning two with penalty.
Mr. Chairman. I went back and to with the county attorney, questioned him about this. And I want to make the best decision I felt like would be in the best interest of this county. And so with that being said, as Commissioner Tanner alluded to, I had sent an email to the county manager, and basically what it said was that, you know, I think option two would be the best for this commission, and this is why. So the chairman stated that he has completely disassociated himself from the business which his sons operate. And what I would like for him to do is sign an affidavit indicating this. Thrift Brothers LLC was the lowest bidder for the project, and they have a trite record of doing excellent work. As stewards of the taxpayers' money, we strive to get the lowest and best bid for the citizens of Ware County. In consultation with our attorney, I believe that option two, that with option two, we are covered and can justify our decision to award this contract to the lowest bidder. Also, the wording contained in option two restricts the chairman from any involvement with this contract, and if violated, will restrict the company from bidding on any project for a period I said of two years from the time of the violation. So that's my position right now. I know that people say, well, okay, his son, but he's, like I say, I would like him to sign this affidavit, that he has disassociated himself, he doesn't have any financial ties with the company, he's not receiving any monetary amounts from the company, that he's completely dissolved himself. And if he signed the affidavit indicating that, then the onus will be on him, you know, if he's not. And they have a trite record of doing excellent work, and we're talking about the lowest and the best bidder. And I think as stewards of the taxpayers' money, we need to try to do that for this county. Unfortunately, well, not unfortunate, but right now it just happened to be his son in this business.
I think also that option two, if Thrift Brothers bid on a job, the chairman could not be present when the bid was opened. You know, that's part of the bid process. I mean, God, if his son bid on it. I mean, they're an option should cover that too. I mean, he should, I have no say in bid process, period. I mean, she didn't bid when the bids were open.
Well, I mean, if it's a C or B, I mean, he, he, not a lot he can change after the bid's open, I mean. But I understand what you're saying, but if, and he's, most time it's a C or B, is that right, Brandon? Most time, they're, they're C or Bs. And so, I mean, he wants to come there and, you know, bring his wife with him, whatever. He's still not gonna change anything as far as the bid.
If you don't mind me asking a question, what's the purpose of moving it from one year to two?
Just so that he know the seriousness of it if he does violate it.
Is that? Where'd this come from?
That was just a, a recommendation. Certainly, that's a discretionary number that the commission could change at their desire.
Under my discussion, this is the fourth county commission I've served on, and in the past, it's been kind of followed, maybe not have had a formal resolution to address this. It was always kind of the gentleman's agreement to follow the definition of first-degree family, parents, and children of commissioner. It just was, everybody assumed that it just wasn't done because of the ethics question in it. And I mean, that's, that's what I still, will still follow. And no reflection on any commissioner whatsoever, because I mean, I'm in the same boat. If my children want to bid with the county on recreation swimming pools, that's one thing. Sprinkle system with Mr. Tanner, I mean, this, this has nothing to do with any individual commissioner.
And I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, one of the things, even when I went and talked with, got, having to pull the conflict of interest for the county's policy as it stands right now. And one of the main things that stresses is a disclosure and disqualification. An employee cannot have a financial interest in a business or activity that he or she has reasonably, may be affected by his or her actions or by the actions of the county. And that's one of the things that, you know, now if chairman, if the chairman still own that company, if he still was, if he was receiving monies from that company or whatever, then I wouldn't even be having this conversation. I would say, no, they can't bid on it because you're in the driver's seat, you're here, you know, you're benefiting from this bid. But now, again, being repetitious, he stated that he has disassociated himself completely from this company. He doesn't have any financial interest, and I'm pretty sure if he means that, he wouldn't have any problem signing an affidavit stating that he doesn't have any interest in this company. And so it'd be just basically like someone else is bidding, they just happen to be his son.
So if he's renting his shop to his daughters.
Well, that's, 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 that could build a problem there. And that's, that's one of the things that we need to make sure that he, again, that he has disassociated himself completely. He doesn't have anything to do with it. So.
I do still own the bit, the shop where the shop sits and everything, and I rent it to them.
Well.
But the conflict of interest, I don't matter, they just pay their rent. That's it.
But you, so you, you still kind of benefiting from it. See, I didn't know that, that, that you rented the building to them. Now, my understanding, you say that you didn't have anything to do with the company.
I don't have to do with the business, but I, I've been renting property to them.
I think that.
I guess I'd be right.
So, yeah, a couple of things to clarify. One, you know, this, this, the policy issue and then, you know, that situation, I want to make sure that we're keeping that as two separate issues. And so what before the commission is this agenda item is, you know, do, does this commission want to put in place a local policy regarding family members bidding? And if so, you know, which options do we like? Then, once we get that decided, we will go into the, you know, the specific decisions of, you know, just as Commissioner Pope referenced, you know, with, with one specific situation, is that a violation of the policy or not? Would they be allowed to bid or not, you know, in that situation? And it, you know, it may be the commissioners are not ready to make this decision at this meeting today, and that's fine. You know, we presented this for, for your discussion and approval. And I did want to just generally state that we have presented kind of broad strokes options. And once you all vote to give us direction on which option you want, we will go back and then draft a very specific policy that would then come back before you all for your approval also.
But we've got paid a project pending, the outcome of us making the decision. And we need to get that paid a project done.
I understand, that's a consideration.
And I'd like to see the boys get in the vehicle. They do good work. But I don't want people to come back and say, well, you, Chairman Thrift, sitting up there today and getting all this business from the county.
So, just so what you're saying is basically we need to go decide on which option we want as far as our local county policy. Then we'll deal with it. We'll get to the minutia of it after we adopt that policy. Yeah.
Yes, sir. And, and just to address the issue about the rental, you know, I don't think that would be considered under a technical reading of a conflict of interest, you know, that's not considered a financial part of the business, you know, that would just be as a, you know, landlord, if he was renting to any business and they're paying him a fair market value. Now, if there was, you know, if they were renting for free or something of that sort where they weren't paying a fair market value, I suppose there could be an argument there. But I don't think that, just to go ahead and answer your question on that, I don't think that would be an automatic
disqualified.
Disqualified. Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'd like to say that's, that's why we got you here.
And there's a lot of different considerations, of course. I mean, this is a you know, it's a complicated issue.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
So we're gonna move this to the agenda today?
If that's the board's desire, staff's ready to put on the agenda.
Vote on the policy.
To vote on the policy. For this agenda item.
Okay, the, uh, speak, uh, Ware County's speed order.
Mr. Chairman, on this item, it was on our last meeting, I, I talked with the sheriff about it. He concurs with the list. He says it's okay. I did mention what Commissioner Pope asked about Mount Pleasant Road, and he kind of agrees that that might need to be lowered either to twenty or twenty-five. And so that was his feedback from that standpoint. But other than that, he's, he said that he was okay with the list. It looked good to him. And if, if we ever need to, if we ever want to change any of these, it can be done by resolution or the, a traffic engineer could do a study, and then with that study, it would be, it would validate that something needed to be changed. Now, all we do is submit it to DOT, and they can change them as we need to. Yes, sir.
And the sheriff has already signed it.
Sheriff, did he get everything settled with him?
Sir. He talked with the sheriff.
Yeah, I talked to him this morning too.
Everything's fine with him, okay?
As long as he saw it, I'm good.
Yes, sir.
All right. See heavy equipment bid award in the public work?
Yes, sir. This item is, we just recently advertised for bids for our heavy equipment, public works. Our contract for leasing ends in September. So this is some information that pertains to keeping the equipment we have, buying it out, or either leasing or purchasing new equipment, the 2021 models. We do not have in the packet information pertaining to, but we do for leasing, but we do not have it for purchase if we were to finance it, where we could own it and not lease it. We're waiting on information now to come back. Uh, we're waiting on information now to come back on that. We'll try to get that, get that as a rush. But, um, what you see there is on the cover sheet, uh, to buy out the current equipment of Michael from wrong, correct me, but, uh, is eight hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-six dollars to buy it out what we have existing? And those are, uh, two thousand and sixteen models. To purchase them outright would be one point six million. And to lease them, uh, with the equipment that we have listed there is roughly about one point two million. And to, once we get finished leasing them for five years, then we'd buy them out, uh, and it would be one point nine million. So, um, our recommendation primarily would be to, uh, to replace the equipment we have and go over with the newer models. And also, at the same time, see what we can get as far as terms with, uh, information for financing them. There's, I've got some information also too, uh, the commission would like just to, uh, try to either purchase them outright or put money down on them and then finance the rest. Uh, we do have money available, uh, but the money that's available can be used for other infrastructure needs as we need. So I don't know if that would be something that the commission would want to entertain. But we can research that and find out what that might be. Um, we, we have regional T splosts. Our single county T splosts is pretty much all allocated to various projects already. So that, that fund would not be available. Uh, we've got some monies left in our two thousand fourteen splosts. Only from what I can figure, probably somewhere around two to three million dollars left that could be discretionary. Um, and then, um, there's a, just a little bit, about three hundred thousand in the oh eight splosts that's used for roads and streets. So there's, there's money there, uh, not a lot of money. Um, but it might be more prudent to try to look at, see if we can just purchase them outright, either through a loan or put some money down and finance the rest. But, uh, I think the better way to go is to try to figure out how to own these, this piece of equipment and, and stop with the leasing. But, um, anyway, I'll just leave it for the commission to talk about and decide, and we'll just go from there.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Scott, okay, uh, on, if we do the purchase, it's a million six, right?
Yes, sir.
So the total buy, uh, one, uh, million nine, so what, why?
What, that, that's actually the difference there is what we've had to, when we, if we were to keep that equipment and buy it out at the end, the total price would be one point nine.
Okay, if we bought, okay, the new equipment.
Yes, sir.
And also with the new equipment, we have a five years, uh, warranty, I guess, on it, uh?
That's correct, yes, sir. And that was one of the reasons why we say that, because, uh, from my, my understanding is with the, with the old equipment, we can get an extended warranty, but it's just the drive train, right? Doesn't carry, count any of the computer systems or anything of that nature. So that could be expensive if once something goes out on one of the old ones. Um, but with the new ones, you do have the, the full warranty to go with that.
Because this is a lease, is, did not bid it out?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
We don't bid out heavy equipment?
We do, we, we did it, but we typically have been leasing it from, from Caterpillar. And so this is basically the information we got them. This Caterpillar, they were the only one to. They were the low bid.
If Michael, could you? Since this is pretty much under your purview, can you tell us what you thought? I mean, as the public works director.
You know, we've looked at it all three ways. The, I like the idea of owning the equipment, that way we've got it. You know, if something comes up down the road, you could, you know, trade them in, you know, whatever we need to do down the road. Uh, the leasing is, it's like a recurring cycle. Every five years, we're back up here having to do that. Uh, the equipment we've got now is pushing right at seven thousand hours, six, seven thousand hours. Um, the warranty runs out at seventy-five hundred hours, um, or five years, whichever. So with the three, if we was to buy out the leases and then do the three-year extended warranty, like manager said, you're basically, you're getting a powertrain only warranty, which there's a pile of electronics in these pieces of equipment. You know, you know, one computer could go out and, and mess up everything. So that was, that was our recommendation, was to go for the, the purchase of the new ones with him trying to figure out the financial side of it.
Scott, do you think the, and I'm leaning more, like I say, to purchase, but what we're paying now in lease payments, would it be a lot more as far as the payments if we financed them, just like we're doing the leasing?
It, it would be more, um, because you're financing the, the whole price at the end. The lease payments would be somewhat cheaper. Um, but that's why I was thinking is, once we start looking into the, the aspect of maybe putting some money down with some of the funds that we have already, and then less of that, so it goes, so we get it back down to where it's, it's manageable.
So I need to come in with a financing package for the decision made.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I would like to see, how much more we would pay in, because if we're already paying lease payments, it may be a little bit more, but it might be to our advantage to go and, you know, purchase them outright.
Yes, sir.
And then put them out for bid.
That regional T splosh, discretionary, what, how many we got coming on here?
Uh, right now, it's roughly about two point six million that we've collected. Uh, we've been just, you know, banking all of that, because now with the, the splosh being, uh, voted down, then we, we're going to have to have that money as, as far as maintenance and upkeep on the roads and such. So right now, there's, there's two point six in there. And it could be used for anything such as this, or anything, anything associated with roads and streets and maintenance.
Do you know what projects would have to be eliminated from the list if you buy a new road grader?
No, sir, that would take some work, because we'd have to find out what's, what amounts to that amount. If that makes sense, for the projects that we have. Now, I know the single county, we pretty much got them all allocated, uh, based on the list that we come up with.
But all that's been decided.
Right, that's correct. So that, that fund is really out of the picture.
Michael, is he asking a hundred and ten thousand for the M's? And they all sixteen months.
They're sixteens, and that's what the lease balloon is. That's how much we, that's. That's what we owe them. If we decide to keep them, that's where that number comes from.
We just pay them off for a hundred and twenty.
A hundred and ten a piece. Yes, sir.
I meant a hundred and ten.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's, uh, four of those. There's two of the twelve M's with slopers on them. Those are a hundred and twenty-five a piece.
Are they worth it?
Yes, sir, we're working them every day.
I mean, are, are they worth that? Have you, have you checked any, uh, bids on, on any, uh, is that machine still worth that much money?
It, it's probably worth it, but my concern is, is they got, getting a lot of hours on them, and they're starting to give trouble. Is, is the only thing. And you can get a warranty on them if, if we buy them like a, a three-year warranty, uh, powertrain. But I, it was real expensive, to my opinion, like twenty thousand dollars a machine.
If we're going to spend that much money, we, we make it by that same machine somewhere else on auction or something for the less money. But I, I wondered if they really worth that much money? Are they, uh, what, six, they five years old?
Five years old, yeah.
Yeah. That's a pretty good bid on that tractor. It could be worth it, he said, how many hours he saving something?
About six, seven. Six, seven, yes, sir.
You could probably put them on gov deals and get that, because we've been getting pretty good bids for older.
Right, and, and that's, me and Commissioner Berth had a conversation this morning. Right now, prices are inflated, I mean, way, I mean.
You can use equipment real high right now.
Six, six months from now, you know, that might be a realistic number. But right now, they're saying they're working them.
Well, that's what I was asking you, I don't know, I hadn't looked at any books and nothing, and I don't know, I'd have to ask, but, uh, that could be a good price.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's, it's probably a pretty good price.
We should check with some of the contractors.
Right.
Find out. I'd like to do that on, before we decide on that. That's a lot of money in favor, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
And the leases, I don't know, I, I don't, lease purchase it, but seem like it's good at their favor.
When we first started, it, it was a very good deal, but every time we do it, it's, it started going up.
That was a whole game.
And, and actually, when we started, years, I think ninety-four, that was the only thing we could afford at the time, to do it that way, so.
Yeah.
And I think we were the first county in, in the state that would be done that way.
And it worked really well for a couple of times, but it has increased every time you go to do it a pretty good bid, so.
Right. Okay.
And that's what we looked at, that's why we decided it's probably better to own them than it is.
Yeah, it, it.
We got lost all good ones. They're already gone. They traded aside of them.
Yep.
These here's, these full of computers and.
Yes, sir.
Now, you're talking about owning the new ones.
Yes, sir.
From not paying them these off and keeping them.
No.
Okay. We'll, we'll let you on those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes, sir.
Bid. Anything y'all want? Anything on the machine? Clerk of Court, case file shelved.
Um, this is a request to purchase, uh, case file shelving for the clerk of court's office. This is one of the things that, uh, Ms. Five Ash talked to us about, uh, to purchase, because they're trying to get all their files in order. Um, there is money left in their operating budget to do this, because no jury and those things that are had in court. And so there's money left in their budget to buy this. It's off state contract, um, and this is the same type of equipment that's been used in, in her office before. I think the reasons I've been here. So, um, this is just a request to purchase that off state contract.
Okay, but then, now this don't cover all of it, this will come up again, is that right?
That's correct, yes, sir. This is half what she's need.
It will come up.
Yes, sir.
One room, I believe it is, ain't it?
Uh, one room, yes, sir. They, this is, this is one half of the first part, uh, but we think we, we can get it out of this year's budget and then budget next year to get the second half. Yes, sir.
I thought we bought the first half for last year.
Uh.
This is the second time, I mean, considering the first time.
In the last, we bought some about three years ago. Three, three and a half years ago, right after I started, yeah, it was about three, three and a half years ago.
Okay. And my understanding, Scott, this is something that pretty much is about, magnated by law, that they have the storage and the shelving.
Yes, sir, it's one of, it's one of the upright, which stands up with the tracks, uh, because they're full of, you know, they got the, the turn disc on them and that kind of thing, yes, sir.
Scott, have you ever heard of the, uh, the manufacturing system that prison does? They actually have a manufacturer, and they make papers and envelopes and, uh, shelving and things as well, used to.
Yes, sir.
Have we ever checked into that to see if it maybe costs less?
I haven't, but I'll check into it to see if they have something similar to this. I know that, you know, you just don't buy them and go put them up like a regular filing cabinet. They have to be installed, because they're on those tracks that slide back into, so, yeah, but I, I can check into that.
Okay. Let's go on to the next one. Let's see what is that.
Okay, under, uh.
Office lease agreement.
Yes, sir, under tab, yes, sir, under tab E, uh, is a lease agreement with, um, Southeast Georgia CASA, the Action Pack Incorporated. It's for the leasing of an office over at the, uh, juvenile courts. And it's one office space, it's, this is an annual, uh, lease that we do. And, um, it will take effect July one of this year, twenty twenty-one. And, um, they're asking for it to be renewed. What I would suggest is, because I think they've been doing this for two years now, maybe one, I can't remember, but, uh, have this where, where it automatically renews unless either party wants to break the lease.
Break it.
Because it's just one office, it's, it's used for their times when they need it there at the, during court.
Um, Mr. Chairman, for me, this attorney, Madam Attorney. I don't, on this particular, uh, issue about the CASA, I chair the action pack board. Would I have to declare the conflict of interest on this right here?
You chair the action pack board, which is, are they the oversight of CASA?
Right.
Yes, sir, I do believe so.
Okay, I just want to state that for the record, so I.
On this, at least two?
Yeah, on this, on this lease agreement with them, I just declare conflict of interest.
Okay.
Because I chair that action pack board, so I don't want them.
Yeah. All right, anything else on that? Not, we'll go to F, the Cactus Street Paving Project, bid award. Any discussion on that? Not, we'll bring it up. Commission items? You got anything?
Well, back to Mr. Chair, on that Cactus Street, now that's the one that Drift Brother bid on, right?
That's right.
Can we, do we need to take care of this other matter first, or can we?
Well, if it's, I mean, it certainly, it's up to the commissioners, but, um, we can have the policy vote on the agenda prior to, um, the Cactus Street bid award, if you all desire, um, this evening. And so you can make both decisions tonight if you want, or you don't have to. Up to you all.
I think we need to go ahead and get a handle.
Depending on which way the agenda goes, I guess.
I'll make a motion to. During the work session.
Commission items, manager items, adjourned?
I don't have anything, no, sir.
I'll make a motion.
I heard you got, got a motion to adjourn.
I heard a motion about something, what was that?
During the work session.
I didn't think you were going down to the bottom, but anyway.
He made a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Said they didn't have county manager items and no commissioner items.
I, I say, I don't know. I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
All right.
Meeting adjourned.